I'll call the meeting to order and uh do I have Nick Sowers to do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please recite our mission statement, "Learning today, leading tomorrow." Alright, Dr. Tormola, I think we're gonna have, before we get into open comments, the superintendent to make some comments before we go into public comment period.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm super excited to be coming to you tonight as your new superintendent of the Wentzville School District. Over the last few months, the Wentzville community has just given me such a warm reception and I've had the opportunity to meet with many staff, parents, administrators, community members, and first responder groups to to begin to get to know the community. I'm excited to present with the Board of Education this evening on the work that's been done to determine our common goals for this upcoming school year and look forward with working with our staff, our students, parents, and community partners to move us forward as a district. I'm very excited about what this year's holds and um and the work that we'll do together. So just to give you a little glimpse into my first hundred days, um, I have uh some photos and things here just to kind of highlight the rest of my comments. So if you're on Twitter, feel free to follow me and our journey here in the district at Dr. Tormola WSD. I will post frequently with photos just to cute give you an idea of um the great things happening here in our community. So I kinda I started off with driving a bus. We had a great uh drive the bus event and I want to say we have amazing people in our transportation department and we are hiring. So if anybody is interested, please um reach out. Our students continue to learn through the summer. We've wrapped up summer school, but I did have the opportunity um to pop into some STEM summer camps and that was very fun to get uh get a little messy and dirty with our kids as they were learning through play. Last week, we were able to invite in and welcome our new administrators. We have nearly thirty brand-new administrators in the district this year, so we are excited to have them as part of our team. Um, last week as well, we were able to welcome our custodians back. Let me tell you, our crew of custodians are fantastic. I've been throughout the buildings and they are working hard to keep our schools in tip-top shape and get us ready for um the beginning of the school year. This week on Tuesday, we brought in about half of our schools to critically review and look at our school crisis and emergency response plans, our emergency responder groups, as well as other community agencies like the Red Cross and County Health were there to help work with us through that process. We will bring in the other half of our schools next week to do the same thing, to make sure that we are ready uh to welcome staff and students back on the first day of school. This week, we were also able to dedicate the Sharing Shed at Heritage Primary. This has been really a labor of love of the um staff at at Heritage, as well as many community groups, including Troop 940 949 and the Caring and Sharing Organization that does so many great things on finding resources for our families. And so it is a donate center, so if you ever have anything, uh non-perishable items, items for the home that are in our new condition, you can certainly donate there as well. And then yesterday, I had the great honor of starting some quick visits to get through the schools. Yesterday, I was able to visit nine buildings and really kind of see the character of our schools. Our our custodians and our administrators are there, working very, very hard, getting things prepared for the um back-to-school with students and staff, so we're super excited about that. Um, and again, we are hiring, so if uh we have openings in custodial, in transportation, instructional assistance, food service, before and after care, we would love to have you. And today, I had um the great pleasure of stopping by our brand-new North Point Middle School. Our staff had a voluntary retreat yesterday and today, and so I was able to welcome in um fifty or sixty of our new staff members. They were there um taking tours, getting to know one another, and they are um very excited to come together as a school community to help um lead our middle schoolers at North Point Middle. Okay, Bren, it's not working. Oh, there we go. This week also, we were able to recognize one of our teachers at North Point High School. We have Jennifer Willis Nichols, who is our Teacher of the Year from last year. She also has now been named as the top ten Missouri Regional Teacher of the Year for the St. Louis area. So she was recognized this week and she is going on to um to in the running for Missouri State Teacher of the Year, so we give her the best of luck and our full support. Then we also uh this week had a great transportation award. We received the Total Fleet Excellence Award um from the Missouri State Highway Patrol. And just as a quick fact, our transportation department transports over eleven thousand students twice a day throughout the school year, and they travel over two million miles each year. So shout out to them for doing a great, a great job. So I just wanna highlight on our Wentzville website, we do have upcoming events, and if you go to our website and you go to calendar and um to the back-to-school calendar, you can find lots of great events there. I do wanna highlight a couple of things. Next week on Thursday morning, we will have the ribbon cutting at North Point Middle. We also are going to welcome back our new educators at the New Educator Summit on August third. Um, we do have the Back-to-School Fair at Liberty High School on Saturday, August thirteenth, from eight AM to eleven AM, and we are looking for volunteers the day before to help us pack bags. So if you have some time the day before, or two days before, Wednesday the tenth, I didn't write that down. On Wednesday the tenth, Kathy Delacqua would love to speak with you. Um, we're looking for volunteers to help us with that as well. And finally, our first day of school is Monday, August twenty-second. It's going to be here before we know it, and so we are excited um to see all of our students and welcome them back. So the last thing that I'm going to um share with you, Bren, if you wanna cue up the video. Last weekend, the city of Wentzville had a town hall meeting on safety, and so we had a couple of board members that were able to attend. Vice President Goodson and Director Lizek were able to attend. Since many of the board members and myself, we were unable to attend and out of town, the city did ask us to create a video to share at that event, so we are gonna take a moment to um uh share that with you. We look forward to uh the future discussions that we're gonna have with the city about how we can partner together to strengthen our district and our community as a whole. So with that, Bren, would you press play? No video, no audio? Okay. We have, you know, a couple tech issues. We're gonna work through them real quick.
Hello, I'm Dr. Danielle Tormola, and it's my privilege to serve as the new superintendent of schools for the Wentzville School District. I want to start by saying how excited I am that the city of Wentzville has expressed an interest in supporting safety throughout the community and in our schools. Safety is a top priority. It is important for you to know what the district is doing to help keep our students and staff safe. To help inform the community of where we stand, the district provided a security update in its June board meeting. I encourage you to visit the WSD YouTube page to watch the full report or explore board docs to view the presentation. It is already a very busy summer. Staff spend this time to prepare for the upcoming school year, and safety plans and training are part of those preparations. Later this month begins a two-day real-life active shooter training led by law enforcement. More training, including lockdown scenarios, happen in August and again in December. Students also undergo two training sessions during the school year. This summer, we are also working closely with law enforcement, first responders, and administrators to review each building crisis plan for existing buildings, new schools, and those under construction. Thanks to your support in the passage of Prop S, the district has implemented security upgrades to protect students and staff. Enhanced security features include camera upgrades, phone systems upgrades, staff ID badges, vestibules that require patrons to walk through the main office prior to us entering the building, one-button emergency radios, a visitor management system, and more. A system that manages exterior doors will be installed this year. Doors will lock with a key fob system. Administration will be able to detect if any doors are left propped open. The following year, an interior door management system will be installed. Of course, we love visitors, but before coming inside, they are buzzed in, screened through the Raptor Visitor Management System, and must wear a badge for the entire visit. Staff also wear IDs. This allows us to quickly spot who should not be in the building. Also know that Wentzville Police Department and other law enforcement can access the cameras within our buildings if needed. Our school district also has a strong partnership with our local law enforcement officials, and we have school resource officers who are quick to respond when help is needed. The city of Wentzville has expressed wanting to do more to help make our schools safer. With that in mind, the district is asking the city to commit to paying fifty percent of the School Resource Officer Agreement. This increased commitment would bring Wentzville up to where other municipalities have committed to support safety in our schools. We always look for ways to improve our safety and security throughout the district. We look forward to continued conversation and partnership with the city and our first responder groups to ensure a collaborative effort in keeping our schools safe. We plan for all stages of a crisis, from the initial moments to the staff and student reunification efforts at the end, all in the hopes that this training is never needed. I'd like to thank you for your support and for doing your part to help keep our students and staff safe.
And with that, I just wanna say I'm very excited about the school year. I'm excited to dig into the work that we have together to um continue building relationships, increase communication, and um really working together to bring our community together and reach the goals of the district, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I can speak for the board. We're also very excited to have you here. Uh, it feels like you've already been here for a couple of months. Um, certainly the actions and the work put in forth certainly speak for itself. So with that, we'll go into public comment. So real quick, each resident of the district requesting time to speak during the public comment period will register his or her name, address, and state the issue to be discussed with the recording secretary prior to the meeting. The board president or vice president in this matter will call speakers to the floor. Each speaker shall give his or her name and address upon recognition. Speakers will be allowed three minutes for their presentations unless otherwise extended by the board president or vice president. If more time is required for presentation, the citizens could and should consider district policy for placement on the regular meeting agenda. Um, we ask that all participants in the speakers follow our requirements as set forth in Board Policy 412, which was also revised in our last meeting. With that being said, I'll call the first person up, and I have Jen Olson.
My name is Jen Olson. I would like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Danielle Tormola. I look forward to working with you in the future. I'm requesting that a member of the board pull the following items from the consent agenda for discussion in open forum. Item eleven point five, bills for payment, July twenty-twenty-two. On seven thirteen, there were two charges totaling around forty-six hundred dollars for elementary library books. I'm just wondering if there's a list that's available for review prior to board approval. On seven thirteen, there's a charge of almost ten thousand dollars for a Brink's armored car service. I just wanna know what it was for, something new, I don't know. On seven thirteen, there was a charge of fourteen thousand dollars for heart rate monitors at North Point Middle School. Why do we need fourteen thousand dollars' worth of heart rate monitors for eleven-to-fourteen-year-old children? On seven twenty-two, we purchased four copies of the book Flamer, one for each high school. Considering the overwhelming number of parent complaints pertaining to non-age-appropriate violent and sexually graphic novels, why would we go out of our way to add another highly contested book to our libraries? For those who are not aware, out of the five districts in St. Charles County, Wentzville, the district with the most conservative population, has the most titles and the highest quantities of the most frequently challenged books, almost as if we're being targeted by those who wish to ideologically support our community. Speaking of ideological subversion, one of my main concerns on the consent agenda tonight are items eleven point two-one and eleven point two-three, which are contracts for licensed psychologists and a PhD psychologist. In the agreement, it states that their job will be consulting with the educational teams and serving as a member of a broader planning committee to improve the psychological functioning of students and improve the overall psychological milieu of the school community. This is concerning to me, as I do not want my child's psychological functioning to be manipulated by government schools, or anyone for that matter, without my direct involvement and consent. There may be a perfectly reasonable explanation for this, and I just ask that it be discussed in open public forum, or open forum. Lastly, as for the proposed revision, two policies zero four one-two that changes the paper signup form for public forum to an electronic signup process, which was not included in the board documents. I ask the board vote this revision down. With an electronic signup process, there's no integrity. People have multiple IP addresses and devices that will allow them to sign up multiple people. There's no way to protect against this with an electronic signup process. When we sign up in person, we, the parents, become the check on the process. We can see individuals standing in line and signing up to speak. If the issue is timing, I suggest we change the signup period to be a thirty-minute prior to open session. It doesn't take ten people thirty minutes to sign up, and not having to be here an hour early would help accommodate the time constraints of members of this community. Again, I strongly urge this board to reject the revision and consider my suggestion for the thirty-minute signup period. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker is Vanessa Hagedorn.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Hagedorn, and um tonight I will be sharing from some Wentzville School District parents who wish to remain anonymous. Parent number one, my children attend a local elementary school. I have found that there is so much disruptive behavior happening, where zero to no consequences occur, that the focus is on that and not education. When I ask my children at pickup how their day was, the first thing they share is the poor choices made by other students. This is a huge distraction, especially to my daughter, who is neuroatypical. It is often the same child that they repeatedly are complaining about too, and again, this child doesn't seem to be receiving consequences. I've spoken with the teachers about this situation. It's not the teachers, they are trying. It's the lack of consequences from the administration. I have even been looking into private school options, as this is an immense issue. Parent number two, I have children that attend both middle school and high school in the Wentzville School District. Years ago, we moved here to this district for it. Sadly, it has been a huge disappointment. In middle school, my son was badly bullied. Though we reached out to the principal continually, there was never punishment. Now, my son is in high school, and in order to avoid bullying, he sits out in his car in the mornings and dashes in right before the bell. I'm so frustrated that these people are not doing anything to punish these kids. What kind of world are we setting up for ourselves? Parent number three, I recently went to a job interview in our district for a special education instructional assistant position. I saw that the position was listed for fourteen eighty-nine on the job website, an hour on the job website. At the interview, I was told that kicking, biting, and hitting could happen regularly in the building and asked if I could handle that. There was no way I was going to subject myself to that abuse for such little pay. I have no idea how they would even find people to do that, and sadly, these kids will be underserved. Oh, and by the way, White Castle's currently hiring for fifteen an hour. Also, my kids attend a Wentzville High School. They regularly complain that they can't use the restrooms at school, either because of vaping or smoking, of various things. They enter the restroom and then have to turn around and leave. They try to ask to use it, the restroom, during class, hoping that maybe it will be empty, but the teachers of often won't allow them to go in the middle of class. My son will hold it all day long due to this unsafe restroom situation. My daughter will walk out of the way to a different area and end up tardy just to use the restroom. How do we fix this restroom problem? Do we need to hire more hall monitors? Do we need to hand out harsher consequences to offenders? Do something, Wentzville School District. This is unacceptable.
Next up, Glenn Becker.
Name's Glenn Becker, and welcome to the school district. I'd first like to ask the administration and the school board to please reconsider the E-Hall Pass system. Outside of what I spoke about during the last board meeting with security concerns and privacy concerns, there is a policy on the books to date noted as Policy two-seven-eight-zero, and it reads, "District employees are prohibited from requiring students to use an identification device that uses radio frequency ident- or sorry, radio frequency identification technology or related technology to identify the student, to transmit information regarding the student, or to monitor or trace the location of a student." This is in direct, this policy is in direct, basically um direct, sorry. This policy is direct contradiction to the E-Hall Pass system and what it's set up to do at your school. It has also come to my attention by talking to other schools that students that know the username and passwords of other students, and Wentzville has had this problem for many years, the usernames and passwords are very easy and everybody knows them, are able to log in and track the location of another student in the system. So I'm asking, please reconsider the use of the E-Hall Pass system and do not use it at the Holt High School this year. Also, I'd like to also ask that you suspend the power lunch program that you're looking to put in at Holt High School this year. It's un- basically, it's unstructured, unsupervised time for the entire school. Wentzville Middle School, where my child attended, had the most violent year on the books at the Wentzville School District last year. We can't ignore that. Over the last three years, Holt High School has found two guns on campus. And this year, we have decided to allow all the kids to roam free for an hour. We're asking for trouble. Do a risk assessment, just think about it. Unstructured time is the time that kids will, things will happen. Kids will be violent. So please go back to the normal block schedule and stop with the unstructured time, or the power lunch program as you've put it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, that ends public comment. Next, we'll go into consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the board? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it's five votes. Okay, moving down the agenda in superintendent reports, we've got a program update on our athletics and activities. Dr. Tormola, turn it over to you.
Um, I'm going to actually turn it over to Dr. Janelle Mueller, and she is going to um introduce our program review.
Thank you, Dr. Tormola. So I would like to invite our athletic directors um from Holt, Timberland, Liberty, and North Point High Schools to give a brief presentation about our athletic programs and activities.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, I think we'll just start with brief introductions of ourselves. I'm Jason Green, uh, the activities director at Holt High School.
I'm Todd Hayes. I'm the activities director at Timberland High School.
I'm Kerry Eldridge. I'm the activities director at Liberty High School.
And my name is Jacob Adams. I'm the activities director here at North Point.
End of your, end of your report, we we look at a lot of things, that we uh look at trends, um so that we're able to assess GPA um participation rates, um and hopefully look at ways that we can improve those things for our students, uh look at problem areas uh so that we can collaborate together. Um, this year, I believe for all four high schools, uh all program GPAs across the board were above a three-point-oh. Um, and I think the lowest one was, might have been Holt at three-point-one for all students involved with activities. And this goes across all of our academic uh programs as well. Um, I can speak for us this year, um given all of the changes with with North Point opening up. It was, it was a a really fun year to see the community rally around a a lot of different things that went that happened for us, uh including uh a trip to the state football championship, our robotics team performed, well, and that's a district-level program, but our robotics team almost always does well. Our dance team, many of our groups, really too many to name. There are a few mentioned on these slides, but as you can see, um, uh, but uh we could be here all night if we talked about all of the groups and the various successes that we had. Um, I I do believe our school board and our administration does a great job of recognizing our kids throughout the year, which is very beneficial, and I know that our communities appreciate that.
The only thing that I would like to add to what Jason said is, as the slides sort of speak, speak for themselves, is I think if you if you take a look at this, we preach uh to parents and students at just about every opportunity we can, the importance of being involved in schools and being connected in schools, and your academic performance will have a higher chance of being high. That didn't sound very appropriate, but uh your your academic performance will usually be higher. And uh I think this this data shows that, uh and so we're always looking for ways to to include more kids and and find opportunities for students to be tapped into into our schools.
So this first slide that you see up here, uh and in in the information we sent you, you probably have ten pages of nothing but numbers. I don't think the public wants to hear all those, but you guys can look at those, you can do a deep dive. We go, we have the GPA of every level. I don't think the public wants to hear all those, but you guys can look at those. You can do a deep dive. We go, we have the GPA of every level of every program. Uh, all the way down to the final page for each is, um, a five-year trend, where our numbers are at, so you can see whether they're going up or down. Now, we're also, you gotta remember in those five years, we had two years that were really different from, from any we've ever had. I've been in this job for fifteen years and those two years really changed things. So it's gonna take us a couple of years to get back on track. So if you would, please go to the next slide. The next slide, and it's probably kinda hard for some of you to see, but what it does, it highlights each of our schools and some major things that went into, uh, that happened this year. So for Timberland, what I'd like to talk about real quick is, uh, we had, uh, our first girls wrestling state champion. Girls wrestling is only a couple of years old and we had, um, and it's only one class. So you're talking all, every school in the state of Missouri. She was the state champion. And what's unique about Kate, and you met Kate here, is, uh, her brother was our last state champion as a boy. So it's, uh, it was pretty neat for both families. We also highlighted our band who, um, had, had a great year as they always do, but they also made the final day of the Bands of America at the, at the Dome, which is an incredible accomplishment. Our dance team was second in state and top twelve in the nation. Our cheer team, uh, were the state champions this year for the second time in history. So we're real proud of that. So that was a little bit of the highlights from Timberland.
And as you can see, um, like, uh, Mr. Hayes said, just for North Point, this is our first year, so pretty much everything we did was record-setting, first of something. Uh, and so, uh, we, we really rallied around our kids and celebrated that. Also like to take just a quick moment to thank all of our other district ADs. They helped us, helped me out tremendously in transitioning to this job from being an assistant principal at Holt. So, um, you know, huge thank you to those guys. They made it a whole lot easier to, to slide into that role. So, um, at North Point, we also had a, a female wrestler, state champion, Cassidy Binwell. Um, and again, like I said, first of her many, Grace Rogers, who was a, a North Point golfer, was our first state qualifier in school history. We did a nice send-off for her. Uh, we had a number of great individual accomplishments. We did tend to be a little bit younger in almost everything, but, uh, we had a freshman, Alyssa Anderson, who was a, a four-time district champion in track. Um, our dance team also, uh, finished first in the three A division of, of the hip-hop competition at state dance. Um, and we were really proud of all of our programs. We had a number of kids who had not participated previously in things and they tried it out because it seemed like that was kinda the, the thing to do. So we, we'd like to see our numbers get to the level of our fellow high schools in the district. And I think we're off to a great start, um, and move in that direction.
Regarding some of our successes, as you can see on the board, we, we won several conference, uh, championships, including, uh, you know, uh, boys and girls tennis. Um, our girls cross-country team won the conference championships. I know I'm gonna leave somebody out because I'm speaking off, off my memory. Uh, we had an individual state champion, uh, in track and field in the one-ten hurdles. He was a really interesting story. Chase Vickery had never competed, uh, in track and field, uh, in his life till he was a senior this year. Went out for, went out for track because he wanted to be involved and, uh, ended up being a state champion in the one-ten high hurdles. Um, we had a, we had, uh, our first, uh, or our second boys' district championship in soccer. Uh, we hope to be competitive again, uh, this year as well there and amongst some other sports. Um, and that's it. Uh, the one thing I think you can highlight, um, and, and it was on the previous, or it's in your data, uh, the, the, the numbers of student athletes that move on to the next level and have the ability to compete in, in college athletics are pretty similar between the three of us. Sometimes there's one school that has a few more, but I think two of us had twenty-five and the other had thirty-three. If, if I remember correctly from the, from the data, so students both from a, uh, participation, social, academic standpoint, and from a resources and having the tools and opportunities needed to move on to the next level, uh, can be had here from our schools and, and the Wentzville School District.
All right, that being said, um, do you have any questions for us?
Any questions, comments from the board? I have just one question. So I saw the goals and stuff that you have for all the activities. Can you maybe just speak quickly to, you know, because I, I find that, you know, activities or sports participation by students is a great thing to have. And so can you maybe speak to how we encourage that and, and look to get more participation in all the various things that we do? How do we advertise it within the student body? Increase that participation as best as possible?
For us, a, a big part of what we do is either through Twitter or school announcements. Um, we do send out quite a few email reminders over the summer, uh, to parents of all of our students, not just returning athletes. Um, and I think a big piece of what we do too is, is through the, the vetting and hiring process when we're looking to hire quality candidates. We, we look for those traits in coaches that will be, for lack of a better word, kid magnets. I don't really like using that term and I don't throw it around a lot, but we try to put those pieces, those people in leadership positions that are willing to go out, talk to kids, encourage them. And so we get a lot of kids, uh, that way. It is one thing that with this pushback of school that has hindered us a little bit in the, in our fall sports, uh, because it's hard to start when we're three weeks into practice, but, uh, we still have kit, coaches that will go recruit kids those first, whether it's at an activity fair early on or our link crew day and those types of things.
You know, the only bad thing, unfortunately now in this day and age, most of these kids are all tied to one sport. They're all playing one already. They've been playing it for ten years. So you know they're gonna play. How do you get those other ones? That's the important thing. And the, what we do, like Jason said, you find those coaches, they beat the bushes at school, especially for your sports like track. I mean, we'll have close to a hundred kids running track every year. Sometimes, one year we had a hundred both sexes. I mean, it was, it was awesome. Football, tennis, things like that, you gotta beat the bushes. They get out there and they hound them at school. They find them in the hallway. They watch them in PE class, see a kid that's an athlete. They, they'll take it, they, they want them all. And, and like you said, those kids, you know, they're the, the kids look up to them and the kids wanna, they wanna impress their teacher, their coach, so they come out. But the, uh, the bad news, like I said, on the other end, your baseballs, your softballs, your soccers, those kids, they've been doing it for a long time. I mean volleyball, I'll have eighty girls come out for volleyball. All eighty of them can play. We don't have room for eighty girls. I mean, it, it's sad. It, it is unfortunately. I mean, there's, these girls play and that's all they do, but they can't make the high school team unfortunately. So, um, that's the bad news. But again, the good news, like I said, we encourage them then to go out for another. We encourage them for tennis, for track, for football and things like that. So they do their best.
Any other questions, comments? I appreciate the presentation, gentlemen. All right, now we're gonna move into old business. We've got a few revisions on some policies. So we need a motion to approve Policies Thirteen Hundred, Thirteen Oh One, and Sixty Two Oh Six as presented.
So moved. Second.
To Betsy first, Shannon second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, moving down. We need a motion to approve Policy Sixteen Ten as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's Julie with the first and Shannon with the second. Any discussion from the board on this one? I'm just quickly checking to make sure.
Vice President Goodson?
Yes.
May I make a comment as you're looking?
Yes.
Dr. Tormala, I just wanted to thank you. Um, the board brought this particular policy to you and, um, just updating it and getting it more in line and, and thank you for taking care of the revision. So we appreciate that.
Really, I wanna thank our team too because they're a part of that process. And currently, we are working on revisions for the regulations and the internal practices that will then align with this policy.
I think that's where my comment was going. I think we've got actions from the last discussion on this was around procedures, the policy, you know, the regulations that support this policy. You know, there's no question, this is a hot button issue. And so I wanna make sure we have our Ts crossed and Is dotted. I do appreciate that. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All ayes have it. All right, so we've got, we went in the new business. We need a motion to approve the Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty-three Board of Education collective goals and professional working norms as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's Betsy and Julie. And I think we've got a presentation that goes, and I think I'll hand this over to you to start.
Great. Well, this is, um, a collective presentation between myself and all the members of the board. Um, we have two members that wanted to really be here today and unfortunately they weren't able to. So they were part of developing these with us and developing this presentation. So I'd like to just start by, um, going back to the superintendent transition plan that I brought with me on this journey that we're on. And so as I stepped into this role after being appointed as the new superintendent, I launched immediately into individual meetings with our board members. Um, from, with the board that hired me and the board that changed about two weeks after I was hired. So I made sure that I brought, um, uh, perspective from all of the board members during that time. We also then, on May twenty-first, had an open session work session. It was on a Saturday. We spent about eight or nine hours together. And we really worked as a team to get to know one another. Um, really spent time visioning the future of what we would like to see at the end of this, this first year working together, where we might like to be in about three years, where we might want to be in five to ten years from now. And through those conversations, we were able to really come up with some outcomes, um, that we're, we're excited to share with you. We followed that up with, um, uh, another open session work session with the, um, Missouri School Boards Association. They came in and spent an evening with the board and myself on effective relationships and communication practices to develop a positive board and superintendent relationship. So we did that at the beginning of June. And between those two work sessions, we were able to create common goals for this upcoming school year that we're gonna share in just a second. We also were able to share, create some collective commitments and professional working norms that we're also going to talk about. From there, we were able to put some, um, processes in place, a structure for frequent check-ins on our effectiveness as a, a board and administrative team. And it's helping us to also align and focus the work of the district moving forward for the year.
Okay, so I think, um, Director Stoli, I think you wanted to start with this slide, just talking about effective governance and kinda what it means to be on the board. I think it's important, as we think about these, as a baseline, uh, before the rest of the presentation. So I'll turn to you.
Yeah, thank you. So as we were all going through this process together with Dr. Tormala, we obviously were really excited and anxious to talk about the goals for this coming school year. But before we did that, we knew we really needed to land on the foundation, having a strong foundation for governance and understanding what that means, understanding what our purpose is. And our purpose really is to do the business of the students and to set the tone and the policies of the district. Um, but with that said, be very clear and intentional and direct um, with the direction we give Dr. Tormala, so she, she understands what it is we're seeking. Um, and so that she communicates well to the board, the needs of the district, so we can support that, so our students do well. Um, and then just obviously part of this piece is, you know, you had already mentioned that, um, the board holding itself accountable, and we discussed some of those pieces. And then, um, just connecting with the community. And as we go through this, as we walk through this, we'll talk more about that as we go along.
Great, thanks Director Stoli. You know, I, I'd probably add, I mean, I think, which goes, yeah, perfect to the next slide. You know, I think, uh, Betsy, you said this to me when I was first elected. I think we're a bunch of type A personalities. It's what it takes probably to be elected and run for public office. And so, um, I find that has been one of my largest struggles is, is really understanding where everybody sits and working as a team. Everybody's got their own views of the ways things work. You had your own platforms you ran for. You have your own experiences you draw from, et cetera. And last year did not go as, as all of us probably had hoped and planned to start the year, and we had lots of things to deal with, certainly not an excuse. But I think we wanted to make it a very, you know, clear point as a group, you know, to put the work and effort into aligning on those things. It's hard to see from this slide, but if you pulled up in the board docs and see some of the words in here, you know, what could we do better? What are our areas, our opportunities? And every board member for eight to nine hours was able to talk about their individual views of what they found to be the most important. And I think we did a very good job, you know, ensuring all voices were heard in the room. What did you mean by that? Why is that so important to you? Why isn't it? And that's what I think this exercise has largely landed on, why we, you know, on the couple of slides here, what our goals are and what that means. And I think, you know, having something that we can hold ourselves accountable to, but frankly, we are stewards of the community. We were elected and put in place by the community, and so the community can hold us accountable to those. It's really hard, in my opinion, to, um, hold the school district or school districts accountable without very clear, what are you trying to achieve? What, you know, as you go into a specific year or a given event, what are you trying to accomplish? And what are those goals that, and metrics that you can hold accountable? The goal here is, no pun intended, to share that with the community, really into a circular reference, to, to have the community hold us accountable to those things. It also allows the board on down through staff to be on the same page. So our four goals and the related metrics underneath those when we get to that spot really help, you know, drive the purpose, um, for the school year. Um, I don't know, Director Stoli, if you had any other comments to add to that, but I, I think it, it was a really good exercise for this whole group. And I ask if there's anybody else that's got comments to get on the same page, because that is very hard to do.
Yeah, um, thank you. I, I did wanna add that obviously it, you can tell from the slide that it says that, um, there's governance, governance tools um, that the board really needs to use to guide us in our work. And it's very easy to get off task when you sit up here because we all have so many concerns and we, we want our district, our students, our staff to be successful. So this is just, we all committed, like, this is kind of a reminder, um, so we can all stay on task.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. So we talked about four goals that we landed on. This is, you know, when we took all the, what are we doing well? What do we need to improve on? What's the focus? What, we actually, you know, took a lot of, uh, discussion internally around what, what's the feedback from the community? What are, what are the common threads? What do we keep hearing? And this is where we landed, you know, improving communication, improving academic achievement, improving school, uh, safety, and improving the culture and climate. So I'll take just a quick to kinda, because those are big, broad goals. I'll take a moment just to kinda walk through, at least from my words and, you know, my peers, please jump in to add something to that. These, these are, you know, I think our plan, which I think you'll see in a later slide, talks about next steps. Our plan is to have SMART goals, you know, something that is measurable, something you can hold us accountable to underneath each of these. Uh, for example, academic achievement is, is a big ask, and it's certainly nothing you fix, if you will, in one year. And so how do, how do we actually go to achieve that? What's the how? And so that's actually what the metric could be, is the, the things that we are going to, how we're going to achieve those and hold ourselves. We are doing those things to take that necessary step to improve academic excellence. You know, in communication, how, how we talk to each other was important in that discussion. How we talk to the community, how we interact, how the school district comes across, both from an internal perspective and external perspective, that's important to us. You know, it's like perception is reality is a, is a phrase that I live by. And so certainly managing perception and understanding where that is is gonna be important for us to correct. There's no shy, I'm not gonna hide behind the negativity that's existed here. We wanna improve that. And through that, we can do that with communication. Uh, school safety been a hot topic. The city, you know, had a great event, um, last Saturday, which Katie and I, you know, were able to attend portion of. And, and so I think this is, this is a collective thing that the community is looking for us to improve on on various fronts. That can be from just a physical safety as it relates to the shooting in Texas. It could be dealing with bullying and violence that's been happening in our schools. You know, it could be a number of things, but we wanna see that improved. You know, there's a number of ways to do that. This is not an easy fix, which we all agree. Um, and I think even some of the solutioning in that session last weekend showed that, that there's a lot of ways to tackle these problems from, you know, mental health to the relationships we have with our parents. Uh, and, and then lastly, on culture and climate, um, I actually made some comments to this specific item in a meeting when we approved, I think it was the NEA um, agreement. This was a topic that came up in almost every negotiation group around what does it really mean to be at Wentzville? We use this phrase, and I'm not a big hashtag person, but I use it. It's like the thing to do, I guess. Uh, hashtag we are Wentzville. Well, if I asked each of you, w- w- define what that means, I think we'd all come up with different answers. I think there was a legacy feel of a small town of this and that, and we've grown out of that. Things have happened. COVID happened, all these other things. We gotta get back to what that means. You know, um, the environment for, um, staffing and retracting talent is competitive. It's competitive within districts. It's competitive to industry, the comment earlier about what White Castle pays. Not oblivious to that. So defining what Wentzville is, so that it's a place that you want to be and you know why it is. Not oblivious to that. So defining what Wentzville is so that it's a place that you want to be and you know why it is. Is important. So fixing the cu- culture, the climate, it's a top-down approach. It's not easy, but again, putting smart goals underneath that. Baby steps to get there, I think is where this board is and and the administration on down is committed to. We put it in the ame- or the agreement for the NEA and our teachers that we are committed to some way of addressing this. And and constantly thinking about that. I'll pause, I think that was my comments, but if there's any other comments from my peers on the the four goals.
I just wanna say thank you, Dr. Tormola, for the invitation to attend the. The Monday, the safety review with the administrators. Um, obviously not having been on the board before, I didn't know if that. Those invitations were extended before, but I learned a lot, I observed a lot. Um, I was reassured by, you know, some of the procedures that we have in place and. Um, it definitely gave me another layer of of trust, you know, with administrators and it just, I really appreciate being able to come.
Any other comments before we move on? Okay. So in the next several slides, there's gonna be a lot of words on the slides and I'm gonna have each board member kind of speak to certain slides. But this is, uh, for those that don't know, we we have, you know, a series of commitments that we've made when we, you know, got elected and were sworn in. We took the time, again, back to my comments around, I've got my own views of what it means to be a board member. I've got my own views around what it means to communicate well. Um, so we actually went through various examples and and Dr. Tormola did a great job of bringing various things to the board to react to on on what we wanna commit. Not just to you, but to ourselves, um, and how we're gonna, you know, effectively work together and what those norms are um as a board. And so that being said, I think there's a quote, uh. Uh, Director Scott, I think you wanted to read on the next slide that I think we all had this resonate with us um as we went through this exercise.
Yes, so one of the tools and the resources that we have is an excellent book called The Governance Core that really is a great resource to help. Individual board members, administrators and superintendent kind of really learn to work together. And one of the quotes out of this book, effective governance requires that adults on behalf of the children they serve. Find avenues of agreements so they can govern the district in an effective manner. This really kind of spoke to our um meeting when we were developing our norms and. You know, it really embodied the fact that we all do have to work together and even though we don't all have the same background and we may not all see eye to eye on. Every single subject, we do our work with. The children and the students of the district in mind.
Okay, uh, Director Bates, you wanna take the next one here on demonstrating professional ethical behavior?
Yeah, absolutely. So I kind of first wanna just say, I had the opportunity of being part of the board and I think. I was on the committee when we first developed that first set of commitments and. Just wanna reiterate that it was always designed to be a living, breathing document and so it was really exciting to like see the group kind of come together and. Decide, you know, what as this board are we gonna make that? And, you know, just as we're called to be a governance layer for the district, we are a self-governing body, so. You know, as you look through some of these, you think i- it's common sense, but really it's just all all of us aligning on, you know, like Jason said. How we're gonna hold one another accountable um as well. And so this particular slide is is really important because we wanna make sure that we are holding one another accountable. That we're treating each other with respect. Um, and the other pieces, you know, we're we're all so ingrained, many of us have have students in the district. And so we're just embedded in the community that sometimes it's hard and we find ourselves getting stuck in the weeds, so just really to hold ourselves accountable to. How we are uh said to govern, right, through the policies, strategic planning, legal requirements and just a reminder. Of these are the pieces that we need to be considering, um, just kind of keep us up at that thirty thousand foot view. Um, when we're, you know, making decisions and things.
Thank you, Director Bates. Any other comments on this from the other? Uh, Director Lysick on the next slide, I think engaging in the work of the board. You had some comments?
Uh, yeah, so engaging in the work of the board, um. I think we can all recognize that often the agenda uh can be long and sometimes it's complicated. There's a lot of information on there. Uh, the addendum added, you know, sometimes there's a lot of information on that with not a whole lot of time to review it, so. Um, I know that we are all committed to being prepared, um, asking the questions that we want answered ahead of time. Um, coming to, you know, the meeting with um comments that we need, knowing what we need to say when we need to say it and. Um, I know that I'm not speaking, you know, only for myself when I say that it is a privilege uh to attend district and school events. Um, and I look forward to serving on committees and working diligently as an advocate for all stakeholders in this district.
Perfect. Any other comments on the board on that one? All right, let's go to the next slide. I think Director Bates is back to you.
Yeah, so I think this one is really important because as Jason said earlier, you know, we all have very. Dominant personalities and we all have opinions and voices, but at the end of the day, it's important for us to remember that. We are able to make no decision as a single individual and it's only as a collective board. That we can really make things happen and move things forward. So it's really important to remember that as we're up here making decisions. At the end of the day, when we walk away, whether a vote may or may not go in our favor. That we walk away and we're still supportive of one another and where that decision landed, you know, also to say sometimes, you know, we have decisions that we have to make. And, you know, we know about them in advance and it's really important that when a decision lands one way, that we're not out of the community, you know, saying, well, I didn't vote that way. We we have to remain a collective body because that's how we can best be effective.
Any comments from the board? Okay, uh, Director Scott, I think you have the next slide. Yep.
This slide speaks to the fact that the Board of Education are advocates for K to twelve public education. We are a public school district. We will fight fiercely to remain. An excellent public school district and to preserve the public education system, not only locally, but at the state and national levels. And that all of the decisions that we make are incredibly important to advocate on behalf of the students in the district. Who are um public, you know, public education, public funded and that we need to be good stewards of the resources that we have. But also continue to maintain and work towards um bettering the public education system as a whole.
Okay, and then I think we've got one more slide. Director Stoli?
Yes, thank you. So this one is about listening and communicating effectively, so we all kind of touched. Um, on this, it's kind of the theme throughout this presentation that we have to have respectful, intentional, productive, effective communication. Or else none of this really works, right? And that goes with each other. If we disagree, maybe, you know, digging a little deep to figure out why another board member has a different perspective. Or, you know, um, if one of us has questions, reaching out to Dr. Tormola so she can, she knows what we're. Seeking and making a decision. Um, and it's just listening and so we can do a great job together. Um, I did wanna kind of preview just a little bit. I mean, we did a lot of communicating as Vice President. Goodson said was listening to the community and having that two-way uh communication. So we have heard that and. We, it's it's in its infancy, but we hope to have more about that, how that's gonna be embedded in the things that we do as the fall approaches.
Any other comments on the board before we finish up with next steps? Okay, so on the next slide, we talked a little bit about next steps, like maybe we can sit up here and. I get made fun of a lot because I talk a lot, um, I can talk a lot, but it really comes down to actions about what we're gonna do and how, again, the community can hold us accountable. So I've got some board next steps and then uh Dr. Tormola will give some next steps as it relates to the admin. We've all agreed that we will reflect on each meeting, like how do we think we, how do we think the meeting went? How do we, you know, perform, if you will, on an individual basis? Uh, we've agreed that we'll participate in a self-evaluation process and I think that will also be with some co- community feedback, you know, how is the board operating? You know, we're extensions of the community, et cetera. Uh, and then we're looking for routine check-ins. You heard that. How do you know you're actually doing what you said you're gonna be doing? I don't think this is, I don't think, this will not be the last time you hear about those four goals. And the related things that we're doing to achieve those goals. And so that's the expectation. I certainly think that the board has set with the admin and that's the goal as we go into the rest of the year. That being said, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Tormola.
Great, so taking it now from the administration side of things, so. Over the last couple of weeks with all of the meetings that I've started to have with the cabinet, with. Our level principal meetings, individual principal meetings, um, other groups that I've been meeting with. I've started talking about our four collective goals and so we are in the process of um. Designing our administrator retreat that's gonna happen in August. This will be a core piece that we do there as well to make sure that. All of our administrators are very clear on the goals that we have as a district and how we can take our current. Um, CSIP or strategic plan, our current goals and work within this framework. With everything that we do moving forward. So we are going to be working as a team to create those strategic plans. Those measurable outcomes and then later this fall, we will be bringing that back to the board for further review, conversation and input. We're also working through um the teaching and learning department to look at our school improvement planning process throughout the course of the year. We've already created our master plan of administrative meetings over the course of the year. We are going to and myself in particular, working alongside our cabinet. We're going to be doing learning walks every six weeks in all of our schools so that we can see where we are. Um, and the four common goals that we are aligning ourselves around will be parts of those conversations. Um, just to make sure that we're continuing to move forward and that our schools have the support and resources that they need. In order to continue to move forward. When we have our, all of our staff back um on August sixteenth and seventeenth. We're planning back-to-school kickoff, which we are so thrilled to have our staff back and. Really have a clear focus of where we're heading this year and be able to share that out. So once we start getting through all of this communication, right, communication is one of our four goals, you're gonna hear from me. You're gonna hear, you're gonna see um our emails and our e-newsletters. You're gonna see the quick videos that we're gonna send out. So you're gonna, you're gonna follow me on Twitter, you're gonna see it every day, right? Um, and so we wanna be very intentional in sharing the information out, getting it to our public, to our parents, to our staff. And through our administrators to make sure this is helping us move forward. Um, and then this year as well, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is revising the Missouri School Improvement Pro- Process. They're, they're moving forward with a process M-SIP six. So that is changing some of the processes, protocols, um, things that we do in the district, so we will be aligning this year with that. We also will be starting later this year, our planning process for our next strategic plan. So our current CSIP goes through the end of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, so next year. So starting second semester this year and all of next year, we will be engaging with our community and our um staff, our. Parents, our, um, all of our stakeholder groups to really see where we need to head for the next five years. And so we will begin that work um to then implement our new strategic plan in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And we're gonna blink and it's gonna be here and the good news is, is that aligning behind common goals like this. Allow us the opportunity to head in that direction and be prepared and focused with all of the things that we do in the district to move us forward. And to give you just a little bit of an idea of some of the work that has um taken place already. We talked about our Board of Education workshops that we began back in in May. Um, as soon as I was announced as the new superintendent, I really began being very intentional with stakeholder meetings as well. Um, within staff, with administration, board members, parent groups, community groups, first responders. Um, the mayor, uh, different groups like that. So we've um really taken some time to dig in. And collect some feedback. We've started our goal-setting process as a board. Um, by June, we um had some meetings with the city of Wentzville, more stakeholder meetings. When I took over in July, we've begun our communication out to all of our Wentzville School District family. Um, we've begun the work with our emergency first responders and our other um critical. Community partnerships to revise our crisis and emergency plans within the district. Um, in the video, you heard about the active shooter training that's going to happen later this month. We have other trainings that are scheduled for later in this fall around um mental health and crisis planning. Um, and assessment at the building level as well. Um, we've been visiting schools, working on back back-to-school prep. And then in August, um, we will have a work session with our school leaders and the board to talk about where we are with back-to-school preparations. Um, getting the updates and then we are gonna have our first day of school in August, on August twenty-second, so we're excited. Looking forward to the fall, then we're going to continue to work with our common goals. Um, and like I mentioned, really create some of those strategic planning um items with metrics to guide our progress over the rest of the year. We're going to work with a new school improvement planning process with our principals, with our ongoing learning walks every six weeks. And then um we will also be looking at our current program and evaluation process, making some updates there as well. So there's a lot of good work that has already been done and a lot of great work that is still ahead of us. But I'm confident by being able to unify behind common goals, collective commitments. We all will head together in the same direction.
Yeah, thank you. I I would echo those things. I think tha- that's the exciting part is to, you know, see that we're aligned as a team around these things. Um, you know, I I think, I think it goes without saying, but. You know, the community has been heavily involved with our district and I I'd like to think that the work that we've done is reflective of those opinions, that that feedback. Those concerns and certainly we don't want that to stop. We want, as we think about those goals of the metrics that we're gonna hold ourselves accountable to, we want that feedback. Um, as we move forward in this fall timeline and we see deliverables and things come up. Um, we wanna continue to have the dialogue um with the community. I think to Director Stoli's point, we're looking to get to a two-way communication plan. Um, you know, as a collective group as well. So with that being said, I think we're in the next agenda item. All right. So unless there's other comments? Yeah, we do need a vote. Yep. So all those in favor? I was, hang on just a second. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it five oh. Okay. Fourteen two, we need a motion to approve the public comment guidelines as presented.
So moved.
That's Julie and Betsy. Before I, yeah, I asked the board for comments, I think, um, Dr. Tormola, just on this one, can you just speak to, you know, kind of how we're using these? I think we've discussed, you know, where these would show up, um, and how we would start our our public comic period and what these are actually for.
So when these are, if these are approved by the board, then we will move forward next month. With adding in um a rolling slideshow prior to the board meeting starting. Where we list the guidelines here as well as other key components out of other board policies. That would relate to our time here within this meeting, so that all um, all who join us for this meeting are aware of the. Board policies and expectations that would um govern this space. We would also make sure that we have those listed on the board um page of the district website. And then during public comments, um, starting next month, we would also list the guidelines up on the screen with the timer. So everybody um has those clearly stated. Um, and then uh the board president or vice president may reference those as necessary. Um, but they will be there as a reminder to all who join us for the meetings.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the board before a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Eyes have it five oh. Okay, last agenda item tonight, we need a motion to approve policy four twelve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I got a Julie first and Betsy second. Before I ask the board for other comments, I think, uh, again, Dr. Tormola, I think there was um purpose behind this. And to the extent the board approves this policy, speak to a little bit of the the details behind next steps, what we plan to do. I know there's some concerns or questions around that, so.
So if it is the will of the board to approve this process of moving to an online signup process. What I would recommend is that we take the month of September, or I'm sorry, we take the month of August. To very intentionally and clearly communicate this change in practice. And at the August board meeting, then take time to show the process for online signup. So that then at the September meeting, we could implement that process. I just wanna make sure that we are very clear with all of our constituents, the change and that it's um a seamless process for for individuals. I just want to make sure that we are very clear with all of our constituents, the change, and that it's um, a seamless process for, for individuals.
Speak just quickly, if you might, um, around, you know, electronic access to electronics, like that, that concern that could exist with different parts of the population, how we would overcome some of that. I know maybe the devil's in the details post this, but maybe speak to that just quickly.
Sure. If individuals do not have access to um, internet or devices that would allow them to do this, we certainly at the Administrative Center will have access for individuals to be able to sign up. We could also, other neighboring districts who have this practice, they also have Chromebooks available um, prior to the meeting um, at the, at the site. So individuals who do come ahead of time, if, if they want to sign up, then they could certainly do so within uh, the time period is allowed. And I believe that the recommended, recommendation right now is to open those online signups twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting and then close them thirty minutes prior to the start of open session.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
I have quite a few questions, actually. Um, so I just want to make sure I have all of this clear because to be perfectly honest, I'm torn between leaving it the way it is and going to a digital platform. I see the benefits to um, the digital platform, allowing additional people who may not be able to be here even ten minutes before the meeting starts, uh, to be able to sign up. I think it's convenient. I know uh, before I was up here, I brought my kids to almost every single meeting and I did speak at some. And so coming an hour early with them, um, and it wasn't terrible, but it just wasn't super convenient. Didn't really have time sometimes to leave and maybe go get food and, you know, I'm going to try not to ramble, but um, so like legitimately, I'm, you know, kind of torn. I, I see some pros and cons. Um, so my questions, uh, first, how do we legitimately um, ensure that those who sign up to speak, if we go electronic, are actual stakeholders? I mean, is it just check a box? Um.
And so one of the plans that we would have, if this is the will of the board, we would bring to you the form that individuals would fill out. So we would capture the information that's currently on our cards, our signup forms. Um, where we can ask individuals to provide us the information of are they a parent, are they a staff member, are they a community member, are they, are they other, you know, something different and they can define that for us. If you remember, we recently revised our board policy around that. So we would make sure that the online signup encompasses the current board policy and practice on what is required and what's recommended. There are some different languages there on um, on that piece of it as well. Um, but we would capture those, those pieces. We would ask individuals to let us know what they wanted to speak on, if it was an agenda item or if it was something else. And then also we would make sure that there was a mechanism built in. Currently, our process allows for ten speakers. After um, after those ten are filled, then number eleven and beyond would also then be prompted to give um, their thoughts to the board via an email as well. So it would, we're, we're looking to have um, something generated to come to them so that they can also share those, their, their feedback and their views to the board. Um, by allowing our board members to um, review that information or have, have the cutoff thirty minutes before as we're um, transitioning from closed session to open session, the board president can review that list. And then at um, his discretion then determine whether or not we want to amend um, the amount of individuals who are able to speak on the topic. So if we see things coming in and there are multiple um, speakers on an agenda item, then the board may want to say we'd like to hear more than our current ten. So that would give the board the opportunity to really um, make informed decisions on how they want to move forward with hearing from our community as well.
Okay, so um, I have a few more.
Sure.
Um. I know that there are things to take into account, you know, IT issues, what if the form is um, un, inaccessible, you know, backup plan. And I think my question around this really focuses around, it's fairly easy for us to communicate to parents within the district because we have those email addresses. We have um, was it Blackboard that goes out with and even text messages? But for the community as a whole, because any stakeholder can come and speak, um, what's going to be our method of communication? And I know these may not be questions that actually have answers, but these are, you know, ones that are truly in my head. Um. We talked about individuals without um, internet access. Uh, personal information, I guess you've already spoken to, it'll just be the same thing that's on the, the sheet. Um. Where is that information going to go, be stored? Um, I know it's still sunshineable, just like, you know, the paper information. Um. Who's going to have access to it? Uh, and then um, I guess making sure that the, the list isn't, I, I don't want to say tampered with, but you know, those top ten and you know, what if I wanted to get on and just sign up myself, my husband, my two kids, you know, take up those four spots? You know, knowing maybe it's a controver, controversial issue and you know, then those, just like that, four spots gone. And I can do that in a second, signing up online where, you know, if we have to approach the podium, sign up. There are already, uh, you know, people here watching, you know, who's at the podium. There's that level of trust and transparency with, you know, who is signing up that the paper form allows us and, you know, just a lot of things I think to work through.
Any other questions, Kim?
Dr. Stoli, yep. Goodson, Dr. Tormola, if I may, um, you kind of had touched on this a little bit, but I wanted to make sure everyone heard this, who's watching and who's here tonight. Can you talk about um, just a times, timestamp so someone
Oh, yes, absolutely.
signs up electronically?
So the other districts that currently employ this practice all have them set up. So if we use a Google form or some other mechanism, that all of those entries would be time, date stamped. And it automatically goes into a spreadsheet that you, that any of us could see. So the process itself on the backend would be very transparent on being able to see the very first person to the tenth person and then everybody beyond that then could also have the opportunity to share their thoughts with the board as well.
I have a quick comment. Um, I think the other thing that it does is it really allows us to more efficiently manage public comment. You know, previously in years past, we used to, if five people were signed up to talk on one topic, we could go to those people and we would say, hey, you guys are all, you know, wanting to talk about X topic, you know, do you guys mind, you know, nominating a spokesperson, right? So that's something that we've done in the past. Um, but I think this gives the board president an opportunity to see, you know, like Dr. Tormola said, we have a multitude of people who want to talk about one topic and we have the ability as a board to kind of like make an informed decision um, about how we move forward. Because sometimes, and I can say sitting in that seat, it's hard when you're just getting a sheet and then you're trying to, you know, move forward, um, you know, and, and make sure that the board, you know, is on board with, without everybody having an opportunity to review that. So it just gives all of us, I think, an opportunity to make an informed decision.
Yeah, and I, I, my comments, I think, Director Lysik, I think I'm torn similarly. Um, you know, given some of the comments and, and questions that you have, I think for, for me, I, I can be comfortable with the policy and the changes here as written, but I think that the specifics there on how we can make sure it's transparent, how we're going to make sure it doesn't, you know, create multiple people signing up for all the ten spots and how that works, how we'll communicate. I know you're going to work through the next month and so we're not implementing this next month. You know, I think maybe bringing those details back to the board specifically on how we're going to do that in the August meeting may make some sense. Um, just to make sure we have kind of all those, you know, details ironed out. Uh, because I think there's a convenience factor that Director Lysik points out that's, you know, very beneficial to those that can't rush here after work and get here to sign up and want to speak. Um, or, or that just can't physically do it. So um, I like, I'd like to, to see it work. I'd like to see that change uh, for those reasons. At the same time, I think those are real concerns and, you know, now more than ever, we should be transparent um, with our processes. And so maybe just bring back those specific answers to, to Director Lysik's questions, uh, how we're going to implement that. And I, I know we want to communicate that and make sure everybody understands the change anyway. So maybe that's just that opportunity to do that.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah, Director Scott?
So I wanted to speak to number one, um, having the opportunity to kind of think outside the box and be able to, you know, rethink some processes that might be a little outdated. I think as a parent who, you know, the students of the district who, you know, works, the, as already been mentioned, you know, the, the convenience of that. But also I think there was too a lot of discomfort from um, maybe some other members of the community who didn't feel comfortable coming, you know, in times where, you know, you know, COVID was high or, you know, um, emotions are running high and they just really didn't feel comfortable. And I think they have been maybe underrepresented in being able to publicly comment. Um, and I also wanted to speak a little bit to also the concern from Director Lysik about kind of maintaining the integrity of the current, of the signup list. And to be completely frank, that's been a concern that's been brought to my attention from multiple members of the community that the current system is not very well maintained and the integrity uh, is a little bit questionable currently in terms of people signing up, others who are not present. So I just wanted to bring that to attention that it wasn't, our current system isn't perfect and there's definitely room for improvement. And I would like to see, I think it's an, an excellent time to kind of rethink how we're doing these things. Um, so we don't run into those issues in the future.
Just one, one quick thought, because you said something that, and something we talked about, right? And we haven't ironed out all the details, but it also would give an opportunity for those, like you said, if they're not comfortably even coming, at least sharing their voice, right? Because they can still share comment that will be brought back to the board. So even if they aren't comfortable coming and speaking, we have that opportunity to still receive that, that public comment. Yeah.
If I'm uh, Vice President.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clarify, um, if we were to move ahead with the digital, the online signup. Um, and just speaking hypothetically, if I were to sign up, you know, myself, my husband, my two kids, there's four spots right there. Uh, but then to come to the meeting and it's just me, you know, so then we call out Katie, my husband, my kids, and they're not here to speak. Um, you know, we've been able, we've sometimes passed our spots on to someone else. Um. Or do we just, if no one shows up, you know, because we've seen the pranks before where people have put names down that weren't like real names and then they're read out loud and it's funny and um, just things like that. Um, so if those people aren't actually here, and so then do we move to number eleven, number twelve, number thirteen, you know what I'm saying? If, let's say, there's just one person that's legitimately signed up to speak and the rest are just nine fake people. Um, you know, those are just like real things, I think. Or is that the part that's left up to the discretion of the board president?
Vice President Goodson.
Yes, Director Stoli, yep.
I already know that we have a motion on the table, but before we vote on that motion, I would just encourage my peers to consider tabling it until Dr. Tormola can go back and work out the fine details. Um, just so we're all clear about what the process is going to be and so everyone is comfortable and, and we can present it then. But I do understand there's a current motion on the table.
I could support that. I mean, we're looking to come back with actions. Yes, Kathy?
If you would choose to table, I believe we would need um,
Vote this down.
Director Scott to rescind her motion. Is that correct?
Or we could vote that down and then turn around.
Yes, thank you, Director Bates, for clarifying. It would actually be to postpone. Thank you.
The, looking at my fellow board members, maybe Director Scott, if you have comments or thoughts to that?
That's fine. I mean, I think that would be, I don't have any opposition to that now.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just take a quick vote, turn down this motion if that's where the board is? We can make a new motion to postpone. Okay? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion fails. Do I have a new motion?
Vice President Goodson.
Yes, Director Stoli.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the recommendation as presented to the next regular Board of Education meeting.
I will second that motion. Any comments or questions on that? No? All those in favor, say aye. Hope you want to do, Kathy, go ahead. Okay.
Um, it was read, it was moved by um, Director Stoli to postpone the recommendation as currently presented to the next board meeting.
Yeah, can we add uh, four twelve into that commentary?
The policy four twelve, is it? Yeah, just add policy four twelve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you good over there? Good?
All right, so with that revision, um, it, it was moved by Director Stoli to postpone the recommendation for policy zero four one two as currently presented to the next board meeting.
Regulars.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No names. The ayes have it, five oh. With that, I need a motion to adjourn open session.
Second.
Got you, Betsy and Katie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, five oh.